We are recording.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining the Finance and Housing Committee Meeting of the Seattle City Council. Today is May 18th. The time is 9:45 a.m. Sorry for the 15-minute delay here. We're going to go ahead and get started with the call of the rule. Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbold.
Chair Moskata.
Present.
Madam Chair, that is four members present, one absent and unexcused.
Great. Thanks all for joining us today. And I do believe Councilmember Herbold is on her way. We have a full agenda today, which includes two items related to our housing department. This is going to be a presentation from the Office of Housing Annual Levy Report and the Investment Report. We'll have a briefing and possible vote on the staffing proposal, which has been attached to our agenda from the previous meeting and is included as well today. We will then move into a briefing and possible vote on the 2021 Budget Exceptions Ordinance and the 2022 Carry Forward Legislation. If there's no objection, today's agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, today's agenda is adopted. Let's go ahead and begin with public comment. Colleagues, we do have a number of folks who are signed up to provide public comment. We're going to endeavor to get through everybody who was on our list today. You'll have two minutes to provide public comment. Please make sure that you're dialing in with the number that you received when you signed up for registering for registration on today's Finance and Housing Committee Meeting. You'll hear a chime at the end of your allotted time. That's your indication to go ahead and wrap up your public comments so you don't get cut off. Today's first three speakers will be Ryan Donahue, Joe Thompson, Kathleen Hofstadt. Again, after you've concluded your public comment, please do hang up and continue listening in on either Seattle channel or the other listening options on today's agenda. Good morning, Ryan. Thanks for your patience. Please take it away.
Hello. Thank you so much. For the record, my name is Ryan Donahue, and I'm the Advocating Policy Director at Habitat Pre-Humanity, Seattle, King and Kidney County. I'm here today speaking in strong support of the Seattle Housing Levy and urge not only for its renewal, but also for its expansion. Thanks to the current round of the Housing Levy, we at Habitat have or are building about eighty-five permanently affordable homeownership units across the city. That's almost forty percent of our current pipeline. It's actually easier for us at Habitat to build in the city of Seattle than anywhere else across King or Kidney County. Additionally, thanks to the Seattle Housing Levy, Habitat in the city has been able to make drastic improvements in the lives of citizens of the city. Whether it is Aurora, who's a single mother educator and Habitat homeowner who is able to move back to the South Park neighborhood of Seattle, or the Merida family, Habitat homeowners in our Lake City project who moved here from Ethiopia by way of, you know, that other Washington, the Seattle Housing Levy has made a life-changing difference for thousands of families across this city. As you look to the future, however, I urge you to stand for affordable housing and expand the Housing Levy by more than threefold. This is your opportunity to make the levy a truly transformative expression of who we are, not just as a city, but also move us towards becoming a more equitable and affordable city. We need to do this not only for Aurora and for the Merida family, but for everybody who calls Seattle home, both now and into the future. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and please feel free to reach out to us at Habitat if you have any questions or would like to learn more about the work that we're already doing today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. And it's been exciting to celebrate those new permanent affordable housing homeownership auctions with you recently. Joe Thompson, you're followed by Kathleen Hofstadt. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Joe Thompson, and I am the President of Mercy Housing Northwest. At Mercy Housing Northwest, we create family-size, affordable communities, and we are also a member of the Housing Development Consortium. I am here because I strongly support at least a threefold renewal increase to the Housing Levy. This is critical in order to match its level of funding to the scale of the current housing crisis in Seattle, which is at epidemic proportions. I want you to know that Mercy Housing Northwest, along with other nonprofit affordable housing providers, are making good use of public investments. The 2016 Housing Levy has exceeded most goals ahead of schedule, delivering on one hundred and twenty-six percent of promised rental units and one hundred and twelve percent of homeownership opportunities with two years left to go. Through the help of the most recent Housing Levy, Mercy Housing Northwest was able to produce three hundred and fifty affordable homes for families. While the levy has been a life-changing thing for these three hundred and fifty families, the need for affordable housing in Seattle is greater than ever, and we must do everything we can to increase the city's supply of affordable homes. The livability of our city and the lives of its citizens literally depends on it. So thank you for yours and the city of Seattle's forty-year commitment to affordable housing, and I look forward to hearing about more about your leadership in helping to triple the Housing Levy to match the scale of need in Seattle. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Kathleen Hofstadt, followed by Michael Seaworth. Good morning, Kathleen. Kathleen, if you're speaking, just hit star six to unmute. Sorry, I forgot to mention that at the top, star six on your own line will unmute your line when you hear you have been unmuted. So Kathleen, I see on the screen, just hit star six on your own phone, and that should send you off mute. Okay, Kathleen, I'm going to keep you up on the screen, and when folks hear your name, you should then hear a prompt that says you've been unmuted, and then that's your indication to hit star six. Let's keep Kathleen on the screen and move to Michael. Michael will be followed by Jesse Simpson. Good morning, Michael. Star six unmute. Perfect.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Michael Syrah, and I'm the Executive Director of Southeast Effective Development, a nonprofit which provides affordable apartments to families and seniors in southeast Seattle. Councilmembers, I'm here to voice my support for more than a threefold renewal to the Seattle Housing Levy. The need for more capital funds is huge, and the levy must match the scale of need. See, has three one-hundred percent affordable projects in our pipeline, and the lack of sufficient city funds is one of the greatest impediments to creating more affordable homes swiftly. And we're just one provider. We alone are helping over two thousand low-income neighbors, and many of our nonprofit colleagues are doing similar work. While we have collectively done this work and exceeded our goals, the need for affordable housing in Seattle is greater than ever. Thank you, councilmembers, for your past commitment, and we look forward to your leadership in helping to increase the Housing Levy more than threefold.
Thank you very much. And I see Jesse Simpson up next. Kathleen, I'm going to come to you as soon as you hit star six to unmute. You are up in the queue. Jesse, good morning. Please go ahead.
Hi. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Jesse Simpson. I work as an executive assistant and policy analyst at Bellwether Housing and serve as the Chair of the Housing Development Consortium's Policy Advisor Group. I'm here to voice my support for the renewal and threefold expansion of the Seattle Housing Levy. The current levy has produced and preserved over twenty-seven hundred affordable homes. This includes over five hundred homes in two Bellwether developments, Cedar Crossing and Roosevelt, and the Rise on Madison. The levy is on track to meet or exceed all of its goals. However, while the levy has met the goals it set, we know that the housing crisis has only worsened since 2015. Job and population growth has continued to outpace the supply of affordable housing, and construction costs have increased dramatically. This moment calls for robust investment in affordable homes. The Housing Levy is a proven tool with sound governance. As the current levy approaches its expiration in 2023, we have an opportunity to match its level of funding to the scope of the housing that we face. Why I ask you to renew the Seattle Housing Levy with a one billion dollar investment in affordable homes, making the levy a truly transformational expression of who we are and the welcoming and affordable city we must become. Thank you for your time and your commitment to affordable housing.
Thank you very much, Jesse. The next person that I see here is Christopher Pearson, followed by Susan Boyd. Good morning, Christopher.
Good morning, Councilmember Moskata and committee members. I am Chris Persons, and I work at Community Roots Housing. We are a citywide PDA that develops, owns, and operates affordable apartment buildings throughout the city. We've been around since nineteen seventy-six and are a founding member of the Housing Development Consortium. Everyone can agree that we need more affordable housing. That the need for affordable housing is greater than we have resources to build it. I'm here to voice my strong support for a much larger levy, one where the financial investment actually meets the need for housing. Community Roots Housing owns and operates over one thousand five hundred units serving two thousand two hundred people and has over one thousand units in its development pipeline. That number is only limited by the resources available. Year after year, the community of nonprofit affordable housing developers working in partnership with the Office of Housing exceeds our goals with limited resources. This is your opportunity as city leaders to make the levy truly transformative. Beyond building safe, high-quality, affordable homes, we help fight displacement and build vibrant communities. Projects like Liberty Bank Building, Pride Place, Cross Avenue Arts are examples of how developing affordable housing with community and for community goes beyond housing and builds and sustains great communities. Now more than ever, we need to go big. Please move forward a levy large enough to meet the need. Thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chris. Susan, good morning, Susan. Susan Boyd's followed by Dennis Sillis. Good morning. Star six. Perfect. Thanks.
Good morning, Councilmember Moskata and committee members. This is Susan Boyd, CEO of Bellwether Housing. I want to thank all of you who have provided powerful leadership in building the city's resources for affordable housing. We are a national leader when it comes to this, and unfortunately, we are also among the leaders in housing costs and rates of housing insecurity and homelessness. So I ask that you not only work toward renewing the levy, but and all us HDC members are on point here, more than tripling that levy. That levy has been absolutely critical to my organization's ability to bring nearly nine hundred new homes online in the next year, by the end of the next year. But I want to make a couple, one point in the need for greater expansion, which is, in addition to some of the things you'll hear from others, our current levy has a built-in assumption that each dollar will be leveraged several times over by other resources, in particular the federal housing tax credit. Unfortunately, that resource has become and is likely to remain grossly inadequate to meet our growing need. If we are to build the amount of housing this community needs, we must expect that our city resources will have to fund a much bigger portion, or maybe in some cases, all of the housing costs of some of our new homes. So this will require far greater resources than we currently have. Thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much, Susan. And I see Kathleen Hofstadt off mute, so we'll go to Kathleen, and then we'll go to Dennis Sillis. Good morning, Kathleen.
Good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Kathleen Hosfeld. I'm the Executive Director of Homestead Community Land Trust. We create stability, equity, and opportunity by developing land and housing, giving lower-income households the opportunity to own a home that is affordable to them and remains affordable to future owners. I'm here to support a multiplier increase in the Housing Levy to achieve the scale of housing need in Seattle so that more of the people who make Seattle great can live here, too. Since the levy was established, all of Homestead's Seattle homes have been made affordable through levy dollars, notably a recently completed project, Village Gardens Town Home, which are addressing displacement in Seattle's Central District. As we advocate for increased funding for all types of housing, I note that permanently affordable homeownership made possible by the levy is one of the most efficient ways to create affordable housing for people in the fifty to eighty percent area median income. It also addresses the legacy of redlining, restrictive covenants, and discrimination that have suppressed homeownership rates among people of color and the runaway housing costs that withhold the American dream of ownership from all but an affluent few. Collectively, we have leveraged the use of levy funds to exceed past goals, but the need for affordable housing has only increased. Thank you for your leadership in renewing and increasing the Housing Levy so that we can do more. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen, and congratulations to you, award recipient at the Housing Development Consortium Affordable Housing Week last week, and for all that you did to open up new housing in the Central District on land previously owned by City Light. Very excited to celebrate that with you as well last week. Dennis Sillis, followed by Lauren Fay, and then Lisa Walters. Good morning, Dennis.
Good morning, Councilmembers, and good morning, Councilmember Moskata. My name is Dennis Sills, and I speak in support of an increase to the Seattle Housing Levy on behalf of Plymouth Housing. Plymouth provides permanent supportive housing to about one thousand chronically homeless adults in Seattle. Plymouth is in the process of opening four new apartment buildings and housing additional four hundred people by the middle of 2023. We will expand the communities we serve when we open Bertha Pitts Campbell Place in the Central District next month and our new development in Ballard later this year. Without the Housing Levy, many of our residents would not have places to call home. The housing need in Seattle is staggering. Forty thousand individuals faced homelessness in 2020. There's a shortage of twenty-six thousand rental units, and one-point-one billion is needed each year to address this challenge. This levy is not just about dollars and projects. It is about making things better for our neighbors. One Plymouth resident was homeless for twenty years and spent two years in many phone calls to finally receive housing. People in Seattle should not have to wait years or even decades to find an affordable home. Plymouth urges the council to increase the levy in all areas to meet the challenges in our city. We ask that the council increase the proportion of funding for operating and maintenance to support our staff who provide supportive services each day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lauren, you're followed by Lisa Walters. Good morning, Lauren. Just star six unmute. Perfect.
Good morning, Committee Chairman Moskata and members of the committee. My name is Lauren Fay, and I'm here on behalf of DESC, the Downtown Emergency Service Center. DESC is a nonprofit social service organization that works to end homelessness by building and operating permanent supportive housing for adults living with disabling behavioral health and physical health conditions. We also provide an array of support services that promote the health, stability, and safety of thousands of Seattleites each year. We are here today to voice our strong support for the Seattle Housing Levy and its upcoming renewal and expansion. In its forty-plus years, the levy has been instrumental in ending the homelessness of so many of our city's most vulnerable community members. We've seen proven success year over year as new affordable units come online, and in the case of DESC, well over eight hundred units of permanent supportive housing that have permanently ended the homelessness of adults living with disabilities and extremely limited income. We're at an important moment in time when we're needing significantly greater investment to fully scale these proven strategies that work. So so many more of our neighbors, as so many more of our neighbors are falling into homelessness. As this process of the levy renewal begins, DESC asks that you both sustain all current investments made by the levy as well as significantly grow the levy to match the scale of affordable housing units in need and to recognize the increased cost of operating and maintaining permanent supportive housing. With your continued leadership on this important issue, we can make even deeper commitments to our neighbors who are still lacking access to an affordable home and also do more to support the workers who make permanent supportive housing a highly successful model so that they, too, can afford to live in the city that they are serving every day. Thank you so much for your time, and DESC looks forward to continuing these conversations as the levy renewal process continues.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. Next, we have Lisa. Lisa, good morning. Lisa will be followed by Brian Lloyd. Brian, you are listed as not present, so please go ahead and dial in, and we'll get to you. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers and Chairwoman Moskata. Thank you for providing me this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Lisa Walters. I'm the Director of Government Relations at the Seattle Housing Authority, and we are the largest affordable housing provider in Seattle and a member of the Housing Development Consortium. Seattle Housing Authority provides long-term, low-income rental housing and rental assistance to over thirty thousand, excuse me, thirty-seven thousand people representing over eighteen thousand households in the city of Seattle. We are also active in providing housing for homelessness through our emergency housing voucher program. Yet, we know that the need is great to house our community, and it's far greater than the resources we have available. At Seattle Housing Authority, our average wait for applicants is two to four years, depending on where they choose to live. Nearly eighty percent of those we serve are children, elderly, or disabled. Sixty-seven percent are elderly or disabled, and one in ten students are enrolled in Seattle Public Schools, live in SHA-supported housing. Again, that's one in ten students in Seattle Public Schools live in SHA-supported housing. The residents of Seattle care about housing. They've shown this time and time again by handily approving past levies, and they care about those most in need. And the housing partnerships among the Office of Housing and housing providers in the levy have led to successful outcomes that are nationally recognized examples of effective collaboration. I am here today to voice SHA's support for more than a threefold renewal to the Housing Levy to match its level of funding to the scale of current housing need in Seattle. SHA is grateful for Chairman, Chairwoman, your leadership and the council's leadership and commitment to affordable housing, the city council's passage of Jump Start in 2020, and we look forward to your leadership in helping to triple the Housing Levy to match the scale of need in Seattle. Thank you so much for your time today.
Excellent. Thanks so much for your time. Brian Lloyd, I still see you listed as not present, so we'll go on to Emily Everson, followed by Patience Malava, and then Estela Ortega. Good morning, Emily. Just star six to unmute your line on your own end, and then that'll get you off mute. And as Emily's hitting star six, I just want to read through the last folks who are listed to speak that are not present. Estela Ortega listed to speak but not present, and the last person will be Naomi C. Emily, good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Emily Evenson, a project architect and a designer at Weber Thompson, an architecture firm in Seattle that provides architectural interior and landscape design services for a broad range of project types in Seattle and the surrounding region. Weber Thompson is an active member of HDC, and my personal areas of expertise are in designing and building multifamily affordable housing and meaningful sustainable design. And as others, I'm here to communicate my support for a renewable, renewed, and sizable increase in the Housing Levy to match the scale of the current housing need in Seattle. This next iteration of the Housing Levy needs to create enough housing to address not only today's, but our future's immense affordable housing needs. And in a time when it seems like all costs are rising, it's no surprise that there has been a significant increase in construction costs since 2016. And we also have the responsibilities as leaders to address equality and climate change through our housing development, which also adds costs, but it's something that we cannot ignore. So in order to create the volume and the quality of equitable housing, we so desperately need, we must address these cost increases head-on by investing even more robustly in our community's future through the levy. And so that's why we're asking for a threefold increase in the levy. Thank you for your continued leadership and commitment to the people of Seattle through this robust increase in our upcoming Housing Levy renewal. If you have any questions about the sustainability or the construction cost piece of this puzzle, please feel free to reach out to me. Again, I am Emily Evenson. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Emily. Appreciate your testimony today. And the last three speakers again are Patience Malava, Estela Ortega, and Naomi C. Good morning, Patience.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Good morning, Committee Chairman Moskata and committee members. My name is Patience Malava. I am the Executive Director at the Housing Development Consortium, a membership association of affordable housing providers. I'm here today to amplify and reiterate a lot of what the Housing Development Consortium members have spoken to, which is speaking in support of renewing and expanding the Housing Levy and more than tripling the next iteration of the Housing Levy to match the level of funding needed, really by the scale of current exacerbated housing need in Seattle. As you will see from the Office of Housing's report that will be presented to you today, the Seattle Housing Levy is a great investment in creating a thriving and affordable community. Our members at HDC have been great partners to the city in delivering and creating homes and providing services to support people in our community. We-
I believe I lost the last half of Patience's testimony. Patience, if you're still there, you're welcome to dial back in, and we'll give you that forty-one seconds back on your clock. At this point, let's go ahead and, Patience, if you're still with us, I see you on mute. Would you like to unmute yourself? Star six. Okay, great. And we'll put another forty, forty-one seconds back on your clock.
Thank you. Well, with two years left in the current levy, we are already meeting and exceeding many of our goals. And while we've collectively done great work and exceeded our goals, the need for affordable housing in Seattle is greater than ever. The cost to develop housing has increased at least by twenty-four percent over the last five years. Interest rates are also increasing, and all of this is at the face of limited resources to produce more homes, and we must do everything to increase the supply of homes. We're really grateful for your leadership carrying forward a forty-year tradition of renewing the Housing Levy and tripling the investment in that funding source. We're also grateful for your work in increasing funding for affordable housing through Jump Start in 2020, which we know is a vehicle for progressive revenue, which is exceeding expectations so far. To address the housing need, we need every tool in our toolbox, and we're grateful for your leadership in advancing this investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patience, and congratulations on a successful Affordable Housing Week last week. Good morning, Estela. Estela Ortega will be followed by Naomi C. Just star six to unmute your own line, and the floor is yours, Estela. Star six unmute, and we can tee up Naomi as well, as Estela is hitting star six to unmute. Good morning, Naomi. If you'd like to come online, we'll come back to Estela. Star six to unmute Naomi. Good morning.
Hey, good morning, all. My name's Naomi C., and I'm a student at the University of Washington. I'm calling today on behalf of a generation of students whose classmates are leaving college to live in their cars, whose parents struggle to live in communities where they raise their children, and whose grandparents are being priced out of their homes and forced onto the streets. I'm calling to express my support for the renewal and expansion of the levy. In both my academic, professional, and personal capacity, I've seen the transformative effects of the levy's resources. Investment in housing is an investment in our collective futures. Today, the Office of Housing, providers, and advocates in our field have proven their ability to effectively steward these resources to meet the increasing demands for support across our neighborhoods and our communities. As they balance competing priorities in the face of growing scarcity, we must equip them with the tools and resources they need to continue this work. I want to thank you for your leadership and commitment to this work and look forward to what we can do together. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And our last, but not least speaker, grand finale, is Estela Ortega. Good morning, Estela. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Councilmember Moskata. I actually was there yesterday a day early, and then, of course, I was pressing the wrong button, so I apologize for that. I am Estela Ortega, the Executive Director of El Centro de la Raza, the Center for People of All Races. As Latinos, we are mestizo, Afro-Latino, and indigenous people. We are in our fiftieth year providing essential services and programs, including early childhood development and affordable housing. I'm here today to add El Centro de la Raza's support to a threefold renewal of the Housing Levy. The Seattle Housing Levy is an essential means for increasing and reinforcing equity in our city. We could not have built Plaza Maya's as providing one hundred and twelve units of affordable housing without the levy, and now we are working on a new development in Columbia City with eighty-seven units of housing. Housing is a home, creating the conditions for a better future, stability, safety, health, graduation, college, and ultimately, a place to thrive with dignity and happiness. All families deserve this. We are grateful for your commitment to affordable housing and for your work in increasing our affordable housing funding with the city council's passage of Jump Start in 2020. The times we live in calls for us to triple the Housing Levy to continue to build an inclusive, beloved community for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Estela, and congratulations to all that you've been able to accomplish and for helping to set the path on what building, not just affordable housing, looks like, but building true community. set the path on what building not just affordable housing looks like, but building true community and a place to call home. Very thankful for your dialing in today. Colleagues, that does conclude everybody who has signed up. Please go ahead. That does conclude our public comment today, colleagues. So thanks again to everyone who dialed in today. Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and go into item number one. If you can read item number one into the record.
Item number one, Office of Housing Annual Levy Report and Investment Report for Briefing Discussion and Possible Vote.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. We're really excited to have our partners here with us from the Office of Housing. We have Acting Director from the Office of Housing, Michael Winkler-Chin. We also have Kelly Larson and I see Stephanie Velasco and Lori Olson. Wonderful to see all of you. We have Tracy Rasscliffe, who is our lead on central staff on all things housing. Wonderful to see you again. And I'm excited for this presentation. I know that we're going to walk through a PowerPoint here today. And this item, along with agenda item number two, are our two components related to Office of Housing to give us a chance to really ground ourselves in all things that Office of Housing has been doing as we think about the second item on the agenda, which is how we make it possible. As you heard from public presentation, public testimony today, there is an opportunity, a huge opportunity in front of us to really think about how we scale up our affordable housing investments in Seattle. And echoing those public comments, I do want to make sure that we are lifting up the opportunity that the housing levy renewal has in front of us to make sure that we are putting together the pieces for a successful package that will pass from the voters and also continues the successful investments that have been made. I want to thank Office of Housing for the work that they've done, their excellent stewardship of public dollars. Putting public dollars into building affordable housing is leading the way, as you heard from public comment across the nation. And we are building more community-driven projects, scaling up efforts to respond to community needs by making sure that those who are most affected by displacement are at the helm and are at the decision-making tables and really at the front of the line to receive important housing dollars. Especially during this pandemic, there's never been a more important call for building affordable housing and making sure that everyone has access to a place to call home. And that includes staying home to stay safe during a pandemic and all the time. This is the cornerstone of what creates healthy communities and population health. So thanks so much for all the work that you've done. You're going to hear more from the Office of Housing in terms of the work that they've done to build affordable housing with the housing levy that has already been in place. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of the work to come. I do want to preface one point especially important as we think about good stewardship of public dollars in these times. The 2016 levy has exceeded most of its goals ahead of schedule, delivering a hundred and twenty six percent of the promised rental units and a hundred and fifteen percent of the homeownership opportunities with two years left to go. So you'll hear more about that, but wanted to make sure that this piece was really lifted up and to highlight how important this work has been. We know we need to do more, but already ahead of schedule is so much appreciated, so much needed, and gives us a lot of excitement for the work yet to come. So with that, I will turn it over. And Tracy, did you have anything to add before we hand it over to Office of Housing?
I did not. I'll let them go ahead and carry on with their presentation.
Wonderful. Okay, thanks so much. Director Winkler-Chin, it's wonderful to see you. Speaking of being at the helm, we're so thankful that you were there at Office of Housing, having had the lived experience of being on the receiving end often of the Office of Housing dollars and knowing some of the important ways that we can streamline our efforts to get those dollars to folks who are trying to build affordable housing rapidly for a community most affected by displacement. Welcome and thanks again for your leadership at the Office of Housing.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And this is my first presentation, so this could end up being kind of awkward because I haven't had to do it on this side before. And really, I think the report actually shows the testament of the dedication of the Office of Housing staff to the work and that they really do believe in, right? And so we'll just kick it off with that. So we have a couple of things here today to discuss with you. The first is the Housing Levy Report, the annual housing levy report. Just to remind everybody, the housing levy is foundational. It's the most reliable and predictable source of funding for affordable housing. Twenty twenty one was the fifth year of the current housing levy, which was approved by Seattle voters in 2016. And the full 2021 housing levy report is available on our website, along with O H's other annual reports, the 2021 Housing Investments Report, which we'll hear about next, and reports on the mandatory housing affordability incentive zoning and multifamily tax exemption program. So they're all on the website. So with that, I'm kicking it off to the next slide.
Good morning, council members. I am Kelly Larson, Strategic Initiatives Manager at the Office of Housing, and I'll start with this overview of the primary programs funded by the 2016 Seattle Housing Levy. First, we have the Rental Production and Preservation Program, which funds the development and rehabilitation of affordable housing throughout the city. Next, we have the Acquisition and Preservation Program, which purchases land and existing buildings to expand our affordable housing portfolio. We rely on our Critical Operating and Maintenance Program to support the operating and maintenance costs of our permanent supportive housing projects and other affordable housing buildings in our portfolio. We invest in permanently affordable homeownership and home repair services. And we fund homelessness prevention and housing stability services. And next, I'm going to walk through the incredible outcomes of the 2016 housing levy as of the end of 2021. Chair Musketa already shared the headline, but I'll walk through the details here. You can see that three of our housing production programs have already exceeded their goals. The rental production, rental preservation and homeownership development programs have produced beyond the goals that were established by the 2016 levy. Our team and providers will soon meet the goals of the operating and maintenance program. We're currently serving four hundred and eighty one homes with this program, just thirty more to go. The Homelessness Prevention and Housing Stability Services Program is on track to meet its goals as it transitions over to the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. And we have one more chart that represents the outcomes of the housing levy. You can see on the far right side of this chart the accomplishments of the Office of Housing team and our community of affordable housing developers and operators, some of whom you heard from earlier. In five years of this levy, we have built twenty seven hundred homes. The goal set was twenty one fifty. The second line there, we've preserved four hundred and forty five homes, exceeding the goal set of three hundred and fifty. And toward the bottom, we've added or maintained three hundred and fourteen homeownership opportunities, exceeding the goal of two hundred and eighty. At the very bottom, you can see the Acquisition and Preservation Program. We've added or preserved eighteen hundred homes through our Acquisition and Preservation Program, lending seventy seven million dollars to expand our housing portfolio. And Lori is going to talk a little bit more about some of those projects.
Over, I just want to also welcome Councilmember Herbold, who's been with us for the last twenty five minutes or so, joined us early in public comments. So thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Sorry, I didn't announce you at the beginning.
Thank you. So these are, these buildings represent three of the seven buildings that opened in 2021. And as you know, 2021 was right in the smack middle of the pandemic, you know, to have these buildings under construction during the pandemic took extraordinary efforts on behalf of the contractors and the developers, supplying extra P P E, making sure contractors were safe when they went on site. So just want to recognize that this is quite the feat to have these represented here today. These three buildings in particular are funded and supported by the levy. Amazing opportunities for homes in West Seattle, serving chronically mentally ill with the rise at Yancey Street. Ninety one graduation and homeless housing units at Queen Anne in Uptown for Plymouth Housing. And then, of course, the incredible anti-displacement work of Filipino Community Village with ninety four homes for low-income seniors. I want to recognize and honor that each of these represent a critical population that would not be able to live in Seattle but for this housing. And recognize that one of these buildings is named after Kristen Benson, who was a case manager at Plymouth who lost her life serving the residents and the people that it is a challenge to do. And so the naming of this building represents that, you know, these are pretty pictures of buildings, but the work on the ground is so critical. And the people serving communities and homeless individuals that are struggling is absolutely paramount to this ongoing effort. So thank you to Plymouth and honoring her with the naming of this building. I want to move on to the rental production and preservation. Again, we're talking levy only, but your incredible efforts and contributions, City Council, allows us to award thirteen new projects. Here's two that were supported by the levy in particular. Fourteen point two million in the creation of the D E S C Woodland Project, which is now in design and permitting and the continuation of the Yesler Terrace Development with Sawara. So then we also have the critical and important work of preserving what we have. We will not be able to replace these affordable homes once they're built. It is very challenging to purchase on the open market. And so your allowance of us to preserve existing housing, like Pacific Apartments, as you see here. This building in particular is currently what they call S R Os, where they don't have bathrooms in the units. And so people have to walk down the hall. The allowance of this support that we did with this award last year allows them to change these to studios and one bedrooms so that during the next pandemic, they don't have to walk down the hall and use the restroom and potentially get COVID or whatever the next pandemic is. So we are well exceeding our goals for the rental program and the preservation program. It is with great gratitude that we're able to do this work. Next slide. So then we also have to plan for the future, right? During the pandemic, we hit the gas pedal and your support of this effort allowed us to do some pretty innovative, creative things. Aurora Heights Housing was an acquisition of property in North Seattle on Aurora. That's going to create four hundred and fifty apartments at some point. We were able to launch the Rapid Acquisition Program, which you can see was but for market rate housing that was coming online in January of 2021. We were able to quickly move, purchase that building before anyone moved in and allow it to convert to homeless housing. This was a tremendous opportunity that translated into an additional two hundred and ten million available at the state for additional rapid acquisition resources. It's talked about nationwide. And so your allowance for us to do this incredible work really allows more people to move off the street more quickly. And then finally, we were able to acquire transit-oriented development site opportunity at the Thunderbird in Rainier Beach. This is going to allow for at least two hundred and fifty units in a critical neighborhood fighting displacement at a light rail station. So all of those allow us to do more in the future. Go ahead. And then finally, you know, one of the reasons why operating and maintenance, so we award the capital investment of the project, but then, you know, the project has to be built before we can award the operating and maintenance contract. This is a critical resource that our service providers need in order to maintain and operate the buildings once they're open. We have a joke in the office that we can build buildings, but if you don't have the operating support to keep the lights on, keep the roof replaced, we can't open the doors and allow people to move in. So this critical resource allows us to keep projects, especially prioritizing homeless individuals, open and operating for at least twenty years. That is why there's a lag, if you will, on the progress towards the seven-year goals because the first levy award takes a couple of years to build. And then once that building is open, then we commit to the operating and maintenance. We are well on track and we are very grateful to S H A, Seattle Housing Authority, who committed three hundred vouchers to support the operations in these buildings, supporting permanent supportive housing in particular. We have consumed all of those vouchers and they are actively in operations in buildings today.
I'll continue on with the homeownership investments. In 2021, we invested three point four million to create thirty three new homes across three developments. We assisted nine new home buyers to purchase homes and twenty six current homeowners to remain in their homes through home repair grants or foreclosure prevention loans. This is an exciting project. This picture here from Community Land Trust, Homestead Community Land Trust. And on the next page, you can see two other homeownership developments that opened last year where twenty one families are now permanently owning their own homes. Really exciting to see these projects come to life. The homelessness prevention program has provided one point five million to support three hundred and fifty households at imminent risk of homelessness. And the Rapid Rehousing Program has provided five hundred thousand to support one hundred and twenty households to move into stable housing from homelessness. And then we love talking about housing levy engagement. We have more work ahead of us as our team works to develop the proposal for the 2023 housing levy. We're currently engaged with our housing stakeholders and technical experts to explore policy and funding options for the 2023 levy. We have met with a levy leadership group of our key providers, coalitions and funding partners. We're convening focus groups to more deeply explore the programs of homeownership, rental housing, O N M and equity. And we are regularly meeting with our housing levy oversight committee. Later this year, we'll convene a technical advisory committee that will further refine the housing levy proposal. And in the summer, we begin broader community engagement to continue sharing the story of the 2016 levy and refining our proposal. In early 2023, the mayor submits the levy renewal legislation to council and council takes the next step for inclusion on the ballot. This concludes our presentation on the levy annual report.
Thank you very much. I'm really excited that we have this presentation in hand, that we will continue to lift up what has been done, but also importantly, what else there is still to do. We spent last week sharing a number of informational graphics on our social media and out in our Teresa Tuesday newsletter last week, or excuse me, yesterday, highlighting all of the investments that have been made in the complementary policies that went along with the housing levy funds. So I really appreciate that you've lifted that up and really highlighted how this work alone is being complemented with Office of Housing policies that we've passed with our community housing roundtable partners over the last few years, such as making sure that we are no longer selling surplus city property on the private market and holding that public property in public hands and building affordable housing on it and doing that in partnership with nonprofit organizations that are led by those who are most affected by displacement, that we have reaffirmed and advanced our policy to community preference and affirmative marketing, that we are complementing affordable housing investments with equitable development strategies so that we can co-locate community services like childcare and small business and community space on the first and second floors. Just think, El Centro de la Raza Plaza Roberto Maya's, as described by Estela Ortega earlier today. Housing complemented by small business and childcare and community space creates opportunity for a sense of place and for more than just a house, but truly a home. So really excited about this presentation in front of us. Again, one of the things that I want to lift up is how we have significantly expanded our affordable housing investments, going from roughly fifty two million in 2016 to now last year, two hundred million in the 2022 budget increase made possible in partnership with funding from the Affordable Housing Levy that we are talking about today, but also by adding in those Jump Start dollars that was described. Ninety seven million on nearly half of our investments in affordable housing in last year's budget coming from Jump Start Progressive Seattle. And the range is going to increase as we think about that throughput, folks needing to get out of homelessness, out of shelters and into somewhere that they can permanently call home. We are on the continuum for how we are addressing this incredible crisis of homelessness. And at the end of that continuum is a place to call home. So this is very much part of that solution. And then the mandatory housing affordability investments, the news from earlier this week showed us that the funding has continued to increase coming in from M H A. The city council passed in 2019 and that brought in around seventy six million in 2001. And again, lifting up that enabling the Office of Housing to forward commit affordable housing dollars, which is something that we passed in 2021 or 2020. Tracy, I'm not remembering right now. But what we're seeing is that this forward commitment is also allowing for us to make sure that there's more funding ready for shovel-ready projects. And so much of this stuff sounds like alphabet soup. It can get lost in, you know, our updates to the also alphabet soup titled A N F Plan, the Administration of Finance Plans. But all of these policies corresponding to additional dollars that the Affordable Housing Levy is making possible is leading to thousands of affordable units. So again, five thousand four hundred affordable homes under development now with four thousand of those coming online. I just don't think we can lift up the work that has been done by the Office of Housing and our affordable housing partners enough and the importance of their stewardship over those public dollars. So thank you for this presentation. I look forward to hearing any questions from colleagues and also will would be remiss if I didn't say that this type of work that we've invested in, the policy changes that we made, much of it needs to be complemented by additional changes to the zoning strategies that our city currently uses and the importance of the comprehensive plan and community engagement strategies that are happening right now that council added funding for so we can make a truly robust. that council added funding for so we can make a truly robust community engagement process possible through our partners at Office of Planning and Community Development. So uh for those who sit on land use, you've heard much of that presentation as well, but these all are um the gears that intertwine to help us create more housing. And I think what you're hearing from folks is we just need more of it and we need we need it faster. Councilmember Herbl, great to see you. Uh thanks for your question. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um uh several questions. I'll I'll try to get some of them out, but realize uh in the interest of time, you might want me to follow up offline. Just let me know. Um in the area around um preservation, the uh levy has two separate uh programs. There's the rental housing preservation program and there's the acquisition and preservation program. And um I just want to understand the difference between them. I know I probably ask this every time you come and talk about the levy. I I am interested in, I understand that one of those programs is very much focused on the city's existing portfolio of um affordable housing and uh funds used to um repair, do maintenance, rehab of uh of properties in that existing portfolio. I'm interested in which of these funds is used to acquire existing housing um to put into the city's portfolio, working with our nonprofit providers um to preserve it from being um, you know, subject to the speculative market. So I'm interested, one, in which which of these two funds uh functions that way? And um and how how uh many units have we been able to preserve? Um and then I understand that the recommendation um that we're probably going to speak about another time um as it relates to a um a preservation program using Jump Start funds. Um also has that focus and would just love to understand a little bit um about what's different in what's being newly proposed and whether or not that will impact um the existing levy programs. Um and then on the um uh operations and maintenance side, I'm wondering uh whether or not housing levy dollars go to support operations and maintenance uh in affordable housing units that are not permanent supportive housing. And um in that same category um around um the investments, I'm I'm wondering the resolution that we passed uh that allowed the Office of Housing to pre-commit twenty twenty two dollars in twenty twenty one. Um can you just let us know whether or not uh the Office of Housing did in fact take advantage of that flexibility and commit any dollars? And then I would just love to know a little bit more about um new investments in um using our uh community preference policies that um Madam Chair worked on um quite a bit. And I um when I chaired the Civil Rights um Committee, I also did so some work on on getting some of um those policies rolling. So would love to learn a little bit more. Thank you.
Yeah, very much appreciate um all of the work that you did on affirmative marketing, community preference uh approaches. And we we are so thankful. We could build on on that as well, building, pun intended. Um I, Madam uh Vice Chair, I'm wondering if you might be able to share those questions as well with us. I think those are four great questions. I also realize that I may have prematurely interrupted Office of Housing. I think you have another half of your presentation that might speak to some of the questions asked by um the Vice Chair as well. So if we could um have those questions in yeah answer either as part of the second part of the presentation. And if there's any additional follow up after that, that would be helpful. Um and if that needs to be done today or in writing, that's okay too. But I think uh the Vice Chair has uh teed up good questions for the second part of the presentation as well that I um preempted our 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 discussion about. So if it's okay, Madam Vice Chair, I think we'll continue with the presentation and then see if some of those questions get answered.
Councilmembers, um I am starting now the second part of the presentation, which is the twenty twenty one Investments Report. And the annual housing investments report reflects all investments made across the entire O uh and across all OH programs, including investments in rental housing production and preservation, the development of permanently affordable for sale homes and the support of low income homeowners through our home repair and home wise weatherization programs. The annual investments report also includes maps, including the geographic distribution of OH investments throughout Seattle and demographic information about the households served through these investments. So next slide, please. Okay, so this uh this is the city funded affordable rental housing chart and this gets confusing, so uh so bear with me here. Looking first at OH Investments to create new affordable rental housing, it's important to step back and look at how investments made each year build on each other to create thousands of affordable homes. So through investments made over the past forty years, at the end of the twenty twenty one year, Seattle had over fifteen thousand six hundred city funded rental housing units in operation across three hundred and twenty eight buildings and more buildings have already opened since then. This graph shows the outcome of OH Investments and Affordable Rental Housing over the past five years since twenty seventeen. As you can see, each year, hundreds of new homes open up thanks to prior year's funding awards. And each year that we make new funding awards, we're building the pipeline of new homes under development in construction permitting or otherwise preparing construction or permitting. Okay.
So these are three additional buildings that opened in twenty twenty one. We talked about three levy funded projects and these are funded through uh MHA, Jump Start uh well, actually not Jump Start because these are opening in twenty twenty one, but um uh some of the federal dollars, the Clifford dollars that came in last year. So these three projects were able to be uh opened in twenty twenty one. Again, during a pandemic, Encore Apartments was done by GMD Development. This is in Belltown neighborhood, sixty homes for individuals and couples that no would not otherwise be able to afford to live in Belltown. Uh George Fleming Place, of course, the long beloved state legislator that is actually known for launching the State Housing Trust Fund. Uh a UW uh star football player was named uh for this Lehigh project in Othello, right at the rail line station. Hundred and six uh low income individuals and families will be able to maintain their housing here in this critical uh neighborhood that's facing displacement. And then again, uh the wonderful opportunity to do the rapid acquisitions. So Broadway Hall is a representation of one of the rapid acquisitions we did last year. This is going to serve thirty six homeless uh young adults uh supported in part by low income housing and youth care. Uh this opportunity to use the federal dollars, sixteen of the Clifford dollars that came in through treasury last year is what allowed us to take advantage of opportunities in the market that wouldn't have otherwise normally been available. Going on. So then we try um to fund projects all throughout the city. Uh it is a challenge because it also depends on who is bringing in projects at what time. So we are dependent on the applicant in bringing in the project as to where the project is cited. But we have some wonderful opportunities that came into play in twenty twenty one where we uh were able to award fifteen hundred units, nine new construction, uh five rapid acquisitions um and a a site for new development. And this speaks a little bit to Councilmember Herbl's question. So we do have uh the rental housing program, which actually can support preservation of but for naturally affordable, I think is the word that you might be looking for, um buildings on the open market. The challenge with that program uh coming into a permanent award is the timing. A lot of times, market rate sellers don't want to wait for the purchase of their building. And so that is where we use the Acquisition and Preservation Program to support purchases of existing building with people living in them. It's a little bit of a challenge because the people living in them have to uh meet our affordability requirements. And so what we don't want to do is displace further um or harm further households that have been living in these buildings for generations. So that's a a nuance that we have to pay attention to. But we have done quite a few of acquisition of existing buildings to preserve them from the open market and the risk. The Madison Apartments on First Hill is an example of that, uh as well as some work we did with Seattle Housing Authority uh two years ago now, where we helped preserve three buildings that would have otherwise been uh available in the open market. Moving on, uh again, uh the preservation, oh, I'm sorry, go back, Stephanie. Um the preservation program of our portfolio, right? So this is uh the rental housing and preservation program. The preservation can go towards projects that don't exist in the OH portfolio, but it is critical to maintain the buildings that we do have that are regulated in our portfolio. We are often serving populations that cannot afford uh any significant rent payments. And so lack of income to support the buildings means that we need to step in deeper and further to make sure that the roof is replaced, to make sure that the um the community spaces are safe and the siding is uh is there uh to protect the water intrusion of the buildings. And so we do invest heavily into our existing portfolio to maintain those indefinitely. Um hoping that that provides some clarity, but both the rental housing program can do preservation of our existing portfolio and uh new product coming into our portfolio. In addition, the Acquisition Preservation Program can move more quickly to acquire buildings on the open market that are at risk of um especially anti-displacement work.
Can you repeat the number uh the number of buildings in acquisition preservation?
You know, for this program and this time, I believe we did three, but we can get back to you on specifics onto the Acquisition Preservation Program for the year. But over the lifetime of the program, there's been many buildings acquired and pieces of land. Okay, moving on. So these are the funds that uh you all allowed, right? So by allowing the Jump Start twenty twenty two amount of funds in which we were allocated seventy one million, we put that to good use. So we announced in the summer of last year, only thirty five million available for the fall round. Your ability and your execution of the budget last year allowed us to expand those resources significantly. And we awarded eighty six million in the fall round in addition to the work we did with the Rapid Acquisition Program, which totals a hundred and fifty three million. So you'll see here, the levy contributed fifteen point two. This is modest compared to previous years because of the PSH pilot. Uh if you remember, two years ago, where we forward committed one year's worth of levy. This is the remainder for that option. Of course, the mandatory housing affordability payments were available, modest amount of incentive bonus payments as that program essentially sunsets with the replacement of the mandatory housing affordability program. And then thank you very much to the seventy one million of Jump Start uh that allowed these thirteen projects uh that were applying in the fall rental program round that we were able to support and uh and fund. And then finally, um sixteen million in what we call Clifford dollars were available and a modest amount of home dollars were available in the fall round. In addition, we use that in the rapid acquisition round as well. So total uh rental housing allocation is a hundred and fifty three million. So here are some of the things we did in twenty twenty one under the fall round. Of course, the Rapid Acquisition Program with the Beacon Hill Apartments. So C Mar Community Health is supporting a program of thirty nine homeless uh units for uh women and couples and men uh that need housing immediately. So we were able to purchase that building off the open market. It did not have people living in it, and so we were able to move quickly to make it programmatically acceptable for what the work that C Mar is doing in particular. The Religious Lands uh Legislation is allowing Saint Luke's uh which is a um Saint Luke's Episcopal Church in Ballard. They are now uh supporting the Bridge Affordable Housing Project that is going to bring online eighty five homes in that neighborhood, a critical neighborhood that we uh often cannot get into because of the high um market competition that we face in that neighborhood. And then finally, uh longstanding uh historic building on Capitol Hill at Broadway and Pine is now being supported to do both affordable housing and youth homeless programs with youth care. Eighty four units on Capitol Hill at that critical component, a partnership with Community Roots Housing and Youth Care to do a number of things, including support workforce housing, but also provide a place and work activities for young adults who are trying to exit homelessness. Great opportunities in twenty twenty one. And then these are some of the projects that we were able to support. New Hope Baptist Church, of course, in partnership with Lehigh uh Chief Seattle Club uh in supporting their Sacred Medicine House Project and um Africa Town Community Land Trust. These are the projects that uh we love to support to fight that anti-displacement. El Centro de la Raza, as Estella mentioned, their next project in Columbia City continues this challenging work of doing by and for the community anti-displacement efforts, but also growing these agencies to be a powerhouse for us in affordable housing development, that they can be the go to agencies to support this ongoing effort that we have.
Oh, great. And I'll be taking over from here, Stephanie Velasco from the Office of Housing. Um so the, we've heard now about uh rental housing uh projects that were invested in twenty twenty one using um levy dollars and and all of the other uh fund sources that Lori mentioned. And so now we'll be talking a little bit about uh homeownership development projects uh that were funded in twenty twenty one. So as you can see, those purple dots represent four different developments uh that uh will create a total of fifty new permanently affordable for sale homes, uh which means those those homes will be sold to uh low income households and then upon uh resale. So at whatever point that a household decides to sell, they will also uh again be sold to um another low income uh income eligible household. Um so across all of these four developments, uh you will see thirty six condo units, uh two limited equity co-op homes and twelve cottages. And I'll give you a s- uh opportunity uh on this next slide to see um a rendering of one of those projects. Uh so this is uh the picture here, we'll look at the picture first and then we'll look at the chart next. Uh but the picture here is of um Highland Terrace, so that'll be um uh a project uh that Habitat for Humanity is going to be developing um in uh Del Ridge. Um and this will have uh twelve resale restricted, permanently affordable two bedroom cottages for low income first time home buyers. Um and now shifting over to the left side of the slide here with this chart, um you'll see here that we have uh four point eight uh oh eight million dollars that were dedicated from the Seattle Housing Levy to support homeownership development. And you'll see also for the first time that we have MHA payments that are able to support um homeownership development. As you all know, um the a portion of uh of MHA uh contributions that are received um are set aside specifically to support homeownership development. And so this is the first year um that we are able to uh to support a development, a homeownership development using MHA dollars. And that project is um Olympic Ridge, which is also um a Habitat for Humanity um project. Uh and that one will have seventeen one and two bedroom condo units um in Capitol. So now thinking about all of the housing investments across the board, so both rental and homeownership, uh just want to take a moment to talk a little bit about where we are locating those. Um so we strive um as uh Lori and others have said, to make sure that we are distributing um our investments across the city. So in neighborhoods across the city. Um we also want to make sure that our investments and those buildings where people are going to be calling home are accessible to reliable public transit, uh to people's jobs, schools and other amenities that you would need um to uh live and thrive in your communities. Um and then with that, we also um want to be making sure that we are investing in areas of the city that have high access to opportunity um as well as areas that are um that uh households may be at high risk of displacement. And you'll see here, um in a moment, I'll show you some um maps that illustrate that. Uh but just to take a moment here to look at the rendering on the right side of that screen is another um housing uh rental housing development that received funding in twenty twenty one. So this is a rendering of Brand Street Commons. Um and so again, as we talk about access to public transit, this is a, this will be a mixed income, mixed use development um uh that will include the affordable units that we're um funding here, so two hundred affordable um rental uh homes. Um and this will be uh two blocks away from the future uh Judkins Park Light Rail Station. Um so here are those two maps that I mentioned. Um so on the left side, uh the that map is showing access to opportunity and the right side is showing displacement risk. And so you can see this is, we've got all of the um housing investments. Uh so uh orange dots are rental housing, uh yellow dots are the uh uh rental housing developments that are receiving reinvestment or preservation. Um and then the purple dots again are uh the affordable homeownership projects. But again, you can see uh we we've got um those investments are really spread throughout the city. But again, you can see uh, we, we've got, um, those investments are really spread throughout the city um, in areas that have high access to opportunity, um, as well as in areas that uh, the, that households that are living there may be at high risk of displacement. So now moving to talk, we've been talking about the buildings. Um, let's talk about the people that live in the buildings that are funded um, thanks to uh, city funds. Um, so on the left side you'll see is the um, incomes of renter households who um, were served in uh, in city-funded um, apartments um, in twenty twenty, which is the latest year that we have um, kind of available demographic data. Um, so you can see that seventy-two percent of those renter households were making zero to thirty percent AMI. So just as an example, you can see down in the table below, um, for a three-person household, uh, thirty percent AMI in twenty twenty-one uh, was thirty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Um, so again, these zero to thirty percent renter households are really um, individuals and families who are either going to be very severely housing cost burdened um, or uh, facing housing instability if they are looking for housing out on the private market. Then um, on the right side of the screen, you'll see uh, uh, of those um, renter households that we have, I'm sorry, about forty-two percent of our households served um, are uh, considered special needs households. Um, and so that includes uh, older adults, that includes people um, who have chronic mental illness, uh, people with different physical uh, abilities, um, those who are uh, uh, facing addiction and other issues. Um, so really, um, again, trying to give you a picture of um, the people, uh, families and individuals who are served by uh, housing that is receiving funding from the city. Um, and so from renter households, now we'll talk about um, homebuyers uh, or homeowners. Uh, so the, the chart on the left um, is homebuyers assisted. Um, so that is um, uh, uh, low-income um, homeowners or uh, sorry, first-time low-income homebuyers um, and the income levels of those folks. Uh, so the um, orange slice there is thirty-one to sixty percent AMI and the gray slice, um, as you can see, is the majority is um, individuals and households that are making uh, between sixty-one to eighty percent AMI. And so just to give you an example, um, sixty percent AMI for a three-person household is uh, sixty-two thousand four hundred eighty. So again, um, households who um, on the private market uh, would really be um, uh, buying a house would be really out of reach um, for these households. And so uh, thanks to city funds and um, uh, assistance coming from the city, these are um, first-time homebuyers who are actually able to buy a home. And then uh, on the right side, you have um, our home repair and weatherization program. So we haven't um, yet uh, uh, mentioned these programs, but these, this is really an important um, piece of uh, the Office of Hou- Housing's work. Um, this is uh, we serve uh, low-income homeowners and make sure that they are able to affordably and safely live and stay in the homes that they already own. Um, so as we all know, uh, it is becoming more and more expensive uh, to live in Seattle. And if you are a homeowner, um, uh, the costs of living um, may be uh, kind of stacking up, and especially for low-income homeowners, um, that is certainly true. And so these programs uh, uh, support low-income homeowners to um, make repairs, um, health and safety repairs to their homes, um, as well as weatherize them. So that can include um, uh, uh, making their homes more um, comfortable during the uh, winter and summer months. So as we know, the summers are getting much hotter, um, and winters uh, can be cold. So making sure that their homes are healthy um, for them to stay in. Uh, so again, looking at that, uh, you can see a, a large number um, uh, of those households are making uh, zero to thirty percent or earning zero to thirty percent AMI. A lot of those folks are um, older adults who are living on fixed incomes. Um, and uh, and then uh, you can see the, the spread uh, there of the rest of the households. Um, and then I just want to touch very quickly here because actually we will be coming back to this committee um, on June first to give our uh, recent social justice um, uh, presentation, our annual presentation from the Office of Housing's change team. Um, so we'll be digging into more about the uh, demographics, particularly racial demographics of um, the households served. Um, but here, just to give you some high-level points, uh, fifty-seven percent of the renter households um, that are served and forty-six percent of the homebuyers and homeowners assisted were led by a person of color. And just to give you some comparison there, that's compared to thirty-seven percent of people in Seattle who identify as people of color or Hispanic and in our latest um, census, five-year estimates. Um, and then to answer or just to um, briefly touch on Councilmember Herbald's question about community preference, um, we will also talk more about that, um, uh, the kind of outcomes of that uh, policy in our RSJI presentation on June first. Um, uh, but just to give you a little bit of sense or a little bit of a teaser here, um, Judkins Junction, which is also known as uh, Jackson Heights, um, is one of the um, uh, renter or, or sorry, uh, rental housing developments that is using community preference. Village Gardens, which is the um, Homestead Community Land Trust um, development that Councilmember Miskata joined for the um, uh, opening uh, very recently. Um, Bryant Manor, which is a uh, a hu- rental housing development that's not yet started construction. Um, and there are others uh, that you'll, you'll get an opportunity to hear about on June first. Um, so I'll pause there. And that is the end of our uh, presentations on the reports, on our housing levy report and the annual, annual investments report.
And I want to answer Stephanie, um, Councilmember Herbald's question on the operating and maintenance funds. So the operating and maintenance funds is twenty-five hundred per unit that has typically in the past been paired with the McKinney match required uh, for homeless programs and to achieve new uh, funding from the federal government. As we know, McKinney has not supported new projects in some time. And so um, primarily the twenty-five hundred per unit goes towards homeless projects. There is a way that we support non-homeless projects and it is using additional capital dollars to do what we call buy down the perm loan. Um, so this is typically in senior projects that have a mix of incomes where they have thirty percent AMI, fifty percent AMI, and some sixty percent AMI. Those buildings cash flow. And when that occurs, the thirty percent AMI still needs additional support. So what we do is we reduce the amount of perm mortgage from a private bank um, so that the building and the organization doesn't have to support a larger loan that they otherwise could afford. And that supports the thirty percent AMI units. So we do it in a different way, just not through the operating and maintenance program. Additional comments or questions?
Just to respond one more, to one more Councilmember Herbald's questions, which I think she was referring to a resolution, and I think it was actually the rescue plan ordinance that you may have been remembering where we gave them authority to spend sixty million dollars, knowing that we couldn't give them all of the, the money that they needed to go do acquisition and to do um, uh, investment and development projects. But I, I think the answer to that question would be that, yes, they did, and yes, they are.
Okay, and I do think, um, you know, we are happy to take a few additional comments, but we are running over colleagues you should have received a whole other calendar till twelve-thirty because we do have three other items here. Uh, but just want to take an opportunity to take a few more comments or questions. And thanks as well to uh, Office of Housing for being interested and able to answer questions uh, in writing as well. Councilmember Herbald and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, um, I just want to um, get a, a little bit local um, as far as the district um, investments that I'm seeing. I, I appreciate seeing um, some of the homeownership pro- uh, projects in, in District One. But um, as a district representative, I want to uh, ask a little bit about what's happening uh, for the distribution of rental housing investments uh, in, in District One. It doesn't seem like a lot's happening either with the levy dollars. Um, I saw the uh, the bonus uh, report that recently came out um, as well, dollars that are coming from the district or don't seem to be going back into the district. I have a specific network of constituents, um, the District One Community Network. Uh, they represent community organizations all throughout District One who have been asking and trying to organize for affordable housing in their neighborhoods um, year. And I, probably two years ago, I guess a little bit before the, the pandemic hit, they invited um, uh, S T C to come out, um, and I'm sorry, uh, the Housing Development Consortium to come out and talk to them um, to find out what they can be doing to get more uh, rental housing investment for um, the need, to meet the needs of, of families who need affordable housing in the district. And just um, wanting to understand whether or not um, O H would be assisted by policies or approaches that would result in a more equitable spread of investments throughout the city. Thanks.
Lori, do you mind taking that question? Because I know that you know about the investments upcoming.
Yeah, no, we actually have a pipeline, Councilmember Herbald, of projects that we anticipate. In your district in particular, there's two sites in South Park that we're working on. One, of course, the Office of Housing purchased themselves uh, uh, soon, actually. And then um, there's several projects that I know of in the pipeline that are coming our way, uh, applying as soon as this fall. So we do anticipate uh, changing that. In addition, you know, of a, a couple sites in West Seattle in particular that were keenly interested in acquiring and hoping that the neighbor, uh, the owners of those sites uh, uh, would be uh, open to selling to the affordable housing community. So working on that, but it is a journey, right? And you are in a very popular neighborhood um, in some of your jurisdictions. And it's a challenge to compete against the market, right? But we do know of several, I know of at least four projects that we anticipate this year and next.
I, I'm, I'm aware of the uh, South Park projects, yes, thank you. I'm fo- focusing more on um, the West Seattle side of the district. Um, and you know, a- aware of the aspirational hope in, a- as it relates to, to one project. Um, but um, I really think we need to be doing more to generate uh, more interest among our partners in, in developing in West Seattle, so thank you.
One thing that's going to actually help quite a bit is that the state legislature passed a real estate excise tax exemption, so gives us a little bit of an edge for, for when you sell to an affordable housing developer, you get a real estate excise tax that kicks in in January of twenty twenty-three. We're hopeful that that will give us a little bit of an edge for uh, competing against the market. But I know of one project in uh, uh, West Seattle coming in this fall. Uh, uh, you know of the second that we're working on, um, but I absolutely agree with you. It is a target area for our si- for our office.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Neighbor. Appreciate that question, um, Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
Thank you. How much is the total voter-approved housing levy right now? I'm just trying to get a sense of what threefold um, increase or expansion would be.
Three hundred million.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Um, and I, I know that this is just the beginning of a discussion. Again, uh, the housing levy slated for uh, consideration by voters uh, in the November uh, election next year. So we have a lot of time to talk about what goes into that housing levy and great questions teed up by uh, Councilmember Herbald. If other colleagues have questions about uh, sort of the baseline understanding that we've received in terms of where we are at and some of the items on the horizon, please do feel free to email those, happy to collect those and send those off and also um, to be copied on them if you're already initiating uh, emails, that's, that's fine as well. Um, but look forward to hearing more. Uh, Director Wingler Chin, anything else to add on this item or preview of the conversations to come on the housing levy in our committee?
No, I think we have a few things coming up. I think we have acquisition and preservation funding coming up for conversation shortly. Uh, I think Councilmember Herbald had a question about the uh, community preference that we can get back to you on email on that. Um, I think we have multiple things coming before the committee, so looking forward to talking with you all.
Okay, great. Tracy, anything you'd like to add on next steps regarding the levy?
Not on these two reports. Um, I think this will uh, segue nicely into the piece of legislation that is uh, up in front of you next, related to the.
Well, I will move us that way unless Councilmember Herbald, is that an old hand? Okay, great. Uh, let's go ahead and do that. Thanks again for this overview, very helpful grounding. And I know um, you've been working on this presentation for a while, so wonderful to have you in our committee. Madam Clerk, could you please read Agenda Item Number Two into the record?
Agenda Item Two, Council Bill one-two-zero-three-one-eight, An Ordinance Relating to Appropriations for the Executive Department, a Briefing Discussion and Possible Vote.
Wonderful, thank you very much, and thanks for sticking with us. Director Wingler Chin, Tracy Rascliff, the Central Staff, and I see Becky Agira on the line here as well. Uh, please go ahead, Director.
All right, um. I think Stephanie, could you uh, move the slide forward one, please? So this budget ordinance uh, authorizes twelve point five new F T E in the Office of Housing funded by uh, what's commonly called Jumpstart. Funding was authorized during the twenty twenty-two budget and uh, O H conducted detailed analysis to determine ongoing staffing needs. And this legislation assigns appropriation to the current B S L. This work started way before I showed up in this office. I think it was acknowledged last year by the previous director and the previous interim director's work that really, really needed to be done. Um, and there was a lot of uh, work involved by Miriam Roskin, who was a previous deputy director, as well as Emily Alvarado and, and Robin Kosky to figure out what we needed to do. Um, this office, uh, and having been here eight weeks, I can tell you that this office runs really, really lean. And with uh, the new projects coming on and a lot of the work that needs to be done around the RSJI work that this office needs to really consider, uh, we needed to add some staff in order to really sustainably grow the department. Um, so our workload here in this office is increasing. The additional position authority responds to the increase in workload associated with new investments uh, from Jumpstart. And just to be clear, Jumpstart added approximately a hundred million dollars to the O H budget in twenty twenty-two and is an ongoing funding source. Um, and Becky, I am not pulled this up correctly. So Becky, feel free to jump in here if you'd like to on any of this.
Sure, so just looking at our workload impacts, we have an increased number of loans for new development. Uh, we have for both rental and homeownership, we've got compliance monitoring, asset management needs for our completed projects. As that portfolio grows, the monitoring and management of those projects grows as well. Uh, we also have an increase in transactional work, uh, approval and implementation of new projects being uh, the primary piece of that. And then there's the community engagement side, uh, which is increasing the equitable community outreach and our neighborhood engagement. Our technical assistance for BIPOC organizations and developers who are exploring, uh, getting into this line of work and exploring uh, being partners with us. And then we have our thoughtful equity work and stakeholder process in both policy and program development. And as you all know, that all takes staff time. On the policy and program side, uh, we have the performance measurement and metrics. We have very intentional racial equity analysis and monitoring. Uh, we are looking at climate resiliency, equitable place-based development and, and key targeted policy and program development areas. Uh, in addition to the twelve uh, uh, staff that we are requesting as part of this, we are also requesting financial support that we would then give to F A S to add on one F T E for wage monitoring. And similarly, uh, financial support that we would then give to law for uh, probably a paralegal uh, staff member, uh, the purpose being additional uh, support with loan document preparation and closings. So they uh, says here that F A S is not, F A S and law are not currently requesting additional position authority, meaning through this council bill, they are not. Not now, um, and sorry, I have a sick kid at home. And we are, uh, F A S and law, it's my understanding they are requesting that position authority through the second quarter supplemental. So I think you will see that separately. But it is not through this council bill. Sorry. So the total cost for this is two point one million, which, as you know, uh, of Jumpstart, Jumpstart were allowed, Jumpstart allows up to five percent uh, for administrative costs. This would represent about two point three percent, so not even half of, of the uh, threshold. Uh, and then anything unused as far as administrative funds, anything that does not make up that five percent will be, will go back into capital and will be deployed for program loans for both new rental housing and homeownership projects. So the other thing this legislation does, so everything we just talked about is Jump Start related. Now, moving forward here, we also need a modest amount to start to develop the 2023 housing levy proposal. And so this legislation uses, proposes to use existing housing levy administrative fund balance in order to do the following to prepare us for the 2023 housing levy, evaluating current levy outcomes, developing the legislation for the next levy, convening stakeholder and community conversations, developing communication tools about the levy in various languages. So all of that, again, not being paid for with payroll tax, but being paid for with administrative balance from the current housing levy. There's this legislation includes the 2022 portion of that. And then our 2023 budget will include probably a similar amount for the 23 portion of that.
Great. Well, thank you again. This is a very helpful follow up to the first presentation you gave us. Just reiterate, Jump Start, oh, excuse me, Tracy, did you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, just to reiterate a few of the points that was made in the presentation, Jump Start spending plan, which was unanimously passed by council. Thank you again, colleagues, it already authorizes 5% for administration of various strategies across Jump Start. And that includes the spend plan associated with the housing portion. Instead of 5%, this would draw 2.3% of the administrative funds authorized. So just less than half, and the remaining would go to rental and homeownership programs. I think this council probably very much appreciates that you are trying to be conservative with the amount going into administration and really redirecting the rest to strategies already authorized as components of the Jump Start spend plan in relation to housing. And colleagues, this would mean that funding is being made available as Office of Housing has said for the needed staff capacity to deploy the housing resource dollars to things already specified in the codified spend plan, including the vast majority for rental housing services at or below 30% of AMI, community-focused acquisition, development and capacity building, and permanently affordable homeownership opportunities serving Seattleites. Really appreciate that you have kept this within the scope of the spend plan as codified in statute and that the Office of Housing staff would go to those items already authorized in the 2022 budget. Are there any additional questions or clarification needed? Okay, thanks, colleagues. I am not seeing any. And Office of Housing, you've been generous with your time for us today. Is there anything else that you'd like to add? No, okay, seeing shaking of the heads. Again, thanks to the team at Office of Housing for your existing stewardship of public resources. And thank you for your attention to detail on how to deploy the remaining dollars in Jump Start. With that, I'm going to go ahead and put the bill in front of us. I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill 120318.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. There's it's been moved in second. Is there additional comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on pass passage of Council Bill 120318?
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
I.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Chair Moskela?
Hi.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor and none opposed.
Okay, wonderful. It is unanimous. Congratulations to the team at Office of Housing. The committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the May 24 Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. Appreciate it, and we'll see you very soon to talk more about the housing levy and all the things coming out of Office of Housing. Thanks for all your work during these times and take care. Let's move on to items three and four. And we do have two complimentary pieces of legislation that will be in front of us. I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if you could please read items three and four into the record together.
Sure. Item number three, Council Bill 120317, an ordinance amending ordinance 126237, which adopted the 2021 budget, including the 2021 to 2026 capital improvement program for briefing discussion and possible vote. Item number four, Council Bill 120316, an ordinance amending ordinance 126490, which adopted the 2022 budget, including the 2022 to 2027 capital improvement program for briefing discussion and possible vote.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. And we're joined here today by interim director Ali Panucci and Tom Meisel of Central Staff. Colleagues, every year we address two sets of supplemental budget bills, the carryforward ordinance and the exceptions ordinance. They have become part of our routine course of business to retroactively approve overages and spending and to carry forward into the next year projects that have not been completed. However, I want to continue to underscore that we are in the midst of a process that we initiated two years ago to really examine processes that had been routine and to try to make sure that we're creating greater transparency and accountability in our budgeting overall. I mentioned in our May 4 meeting that we don't actually want to have it be routine to have an exceptions ordinance by its very name and nature, it should be exceptional. So this is part of the process that we currently have. But I do look forward to our ongoing conversations in the Select Budget Committee meetings and in the Finance and Housing Committee meetings about how we can continue to create budgets that more accurately align with each of the department's needs for the budget in front of them for the upcoming year. And ideally, the upcoming biennial budgets as we move towards biennial budgeting as well. Really appreciate the work that Tom Meisel has done. As you saw in the memo that has been attached to this agenda and circulated to the city council, Central Staff has done some great research on options to help us eliminate or reduce the need for exceptions to our budgeting practice. In front of us, we do have the exceptions ordinance, which I understand is the general ballpark of exceptions we've allowed in previous years as well as the carryforward ordinance. I'm going to let Tom Meisel and Ali Panucci really speak to what is in front of us. And we can talk a little bit more about how we are trying to get a better sense of more accurate budgeting so that we're not in the process of passing exceptions ordinance routinely. So that is work to be done in the future. But in terms of this legislation in front of us, the two documents in front of us, this is, I think, in alignment with similar practices of the past. And I'll let Tom Meisel and Ali Panucci walk through the details. So you all know what's in the carryforward ordinance and in the exception ordinance before we consider them. Thank you, Chair Mosketa. Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Ali Panucci of your Council Central Staff. And I am going to just turn it over to Tom and we'll share my screen.
Thank you, Ali. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the committee. Building off of the chair's introduction, this morning's presentation will cover the 2021 carryforward and 2021 exceptions bills. If we can move to the next slide. So similar to last year, what I plan to do is divide a kind of overview on how the city of Seattle budgets are adjusted throughout the year, starting from the adopted budget, including automatic carryforwards, which I'll explain a bit more of what that means. And then also supplementals that are before the council during the year. And then finally, the exceptions bill that gets submitted after the fiscal year has been complete. And then go into the details of some significant highlights of the 202021 carryforward and the 2021 exceptions bills. So by way of background, the RCW, so state law, the citation noted here requires that by November of each year, the city council passes an annual budget for the year. That that budget authority covers the operations from January 1st through December 31st of the year. Though the budget discussion and document includes reference to a multiple-year capital improvements program. The actual budget adoption itself only adopts one year of capital investments for the for the upcoming budget year. And then in specific terms passed by the council on November 23rd of last year, ordinance 126490 is the 2022 adopted budget and includes appropriations totaling $7.1 billion from all sources. So moving into the kind of operating phase of the 2022 budget year, there is a sort of a technical adjustment that takes place, and that is the accounting for automatic carryforwards. So state law allows for certain sized cities, so Seattle being one of those cities, in fact, the only one, to have non-lapsing capital appropriations. So that means that monies that are dedicated for capital project improvements automatically carry into future years until they are either fully spent or the this city council elects to abrogate or reduce those appropriations to through a law. All other appropriations, absent any other measure, are assumed to be non-lapsing. So that means when the fiscal year is complete, as at December 31st, the authority to spend that money goes away. The the exceptions to that are grants. So in the event that the council accepts money from external sources, so grant revenues is a key, a key type. But there's also some service contract type revenues. There will be provision in the ordinance that spends that money that provides for a non-lapsing. So similar to the capital money, the ability for that money to be fully spent. And largely that's due to the the concept that grant monies are irregular in terms of receipt and they're tied to performing a specific attached to the reason why the grant money was provided in the first place. So so it's not, it doesn't always align specifically with the fiscal year. So they the council provides that non-lapsing authority. Also, there are there are other cases where the council may in ordinance provide what's termed more administrative authority and to some select appropriations within the budget. So those are all done within the budget authority that provide, within the budget legislation that provides those specific authorities. And then finally, there's what we term incumbents. And so this is essentially an accounting term, which which is providing, shifting the budget authority to complete contracts or agreements that the city has already entered into into the prior year and just providing the authority to spend money from the city treasury when we receive those invoices, which can sometimes come after the year is complete. So that's really just tied at a an accounting level where we just want to ensure that we have money to pay invoices when we receive them. So by way of a kind of a high level perspective, and there's a detail on this on page, I believe it's page three of the memo, there's $1.9 million of automatic carryforward across all city funds. So in last year's analysis, approximately the same amount of money that was carried forward into the 2021 budget, which is about 27% increase in the budget authority for the year. And so that's across all funds, and it's automatically been adjusted and into the revised budget. And you'll see a later table how that what how that factors into the full context of the city budget. So if you look at the next slide. So so that's that covers the automatic authority. The next piece more failing to the discussion today is supplementals. And so state law provides for supplementals. And I and I referenced in the memo kind of the specific wording because it's interesting to know. It allows the council with a three-fourths majority to appropriate from the emergency fund or other designated funds an amount sufficient to meet the actual necessary expenditures of the city for which insufficient or nor appropriations have been made due to causes which could not have reasonably enforced in at the time of making the budget. So that is the provision in state law that allows for supplemental adjustments to take place. You noted in the the definition that there is a voting threshold that applies. So when there is an actual stated, specifically stated emergency, similar to the COVID emergency that that was that's still in place, the voting threshold for for supplemental adjustments to pay for things related to emergencies, two-thirds of the city council. Otherwise, it's a three, a three-quarters approval threshold. However, there are, there is a, in cases where there are grant monies that are being received in the legislation that are completely funding the supplemental increase to the budget, it's a simple majority vote. And so some of the legislation that has been approved so far this year has has been subject to that simple majority because it is essentially accepted new grant revenue and spent that revenue. And and finally, just in terms of the kind of the nature of the supplementals, there are what I term standalone or comprehensive. So standalone bills kind of are single subject and more specific that the the grant acceptance ordinances, some of which have been already passed this year are of that type. And then there are more comprehensive ones, which are the ones we're talking about today, where it's more of a process by which the city budget office solicits feedback or and input from the departments for what the various needs are and and collects that that assessment across the city of what the proposed increases should be and submits kind of a package of adjustments that affect multiple funds and multiple city budgets. And again, those are those are the ones that we are talking about today.
Thanks, Tom. I would just add here that we have been working with the the direction of Chair Mosketa to really try to reduce the number of supplemental budget actions that the council has asked to take up during the year. The number of budget changes throughout the year make it difficult for the, I think, for the public and the council to track what was approved and what is happening and how how funds are being expended and outcomes and that sort of thing. And so just we'll highlight that we have moved from a quarterly supplemental process to what we're hoping to get even more clearly twice a year project process for the comprehensive bills, a mid-year supplemental and a year-end supplemental budget bill that gets transmitted in September with the next year's proposed budget and hope over time to also streamline all of the individual grant acceptance ordinances into just those comprehensive mid-year, mid-year packages, except when there are sort of emergent situations that require immediate immediate action.
And so just a little bit more detail. Thank you for adding that, Ali. The additional detail, and this is covered in page three through four of the memo. There have been four standalone supplemental bills passed by city council thus far, appropriating a total of $26.8 million. These include appropriations for the Seattle Rescue Plan Act Four, and except a couple of acceptances of SPD grants. And and finally, S dot brand acceptance. So that's the activity thus far. The comprehensive bills are the carryforward, and then as Ali pointed out, the mid-year and year-end supplemental bills. And then finally, the exceptions, which is budget instances where department spending has exceeded the appropriation for the year. And there is a request to true that up after the fiscal year on an exceptional basis. This ties ties it all together. As you can see, we started with 2022 adopted budget of $7.1 million. You can see the general fund, other fund splits. There's $96.7 million of automatically carried forward money in the general fund, 1.8 million in other funds, bringing the total adjustment up to $1.9 billion. Standalone bills, the four bills that I just mentioned, add another $26.8 million of budget authority, bringing the the total revised budget to just shy of $9.1 billion, which is roughly a 27% increase to the adopted budget. So now with that, with that kind of context about budget adjustments in general, I'll now dive into some of the specific details of the the bills before you this morning. So Council Bill 120316, the carryforward legislation would increase the city budget across all funds by 127.7 million dollars. The summary attachment submitted with the legislation shows the the detail for all of these proposed changes as submitted by the executive. Central Staff has has reviewed those to determine whether or not they they meet the character and nature of a carryforward. So essentially continuing work that was begun in 2021 that that is anticipated to continue into 2022 and just needs the resources to. That is anticipated to continue into twenty twenty two and just needs the resources to shift across fiscal years to continue that work. Um what what uh what I have done in the memo and 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 this presentation is just pulled out those most significant changes. Of those items that are of council interest um to just um to kind of give a flavor and to kind of. Um show the the bulk of where the where the funds are going. Um once and and I would also point out that the the memo, um the appendix, so page nine of the staff memo. Includes a very detailed table by department showing um the information I've covered so far. So the adopted budget starting points, the um auto carry forward adjustments. Um and then um puts um puts that revised budget in the context of of this this request. So you can see the um the percentage increases to each department budget because of this um carry forward bill. And so these are the percents that I show on this slide. Um oh, the OPCD budgets of the Office of Planning and Community Development um would increase by ninety five percent. Um based on this, um but based on the appropriation change in this bill. Um the overwhelming chunk of that is in the general fund, and it's to continue um. The equitable development initiative. So it's basically for awards that have not yet been contracted. And so it's just ensuring that the money is available to to um to deliver those monies when they are contracted. Um similarly, uh there's five point seven million dollars, which is fourteen percent of the Office of Arts and Culture budget. That's a general fund increase um to to implement strategic investment fund allocation. So the strategic investment fund, just for a little backstory, is um was funded originally and and the twenty twenty budget. From Mercer Mega Block sales proceeds for a variety of um for um variety of purposes. So there's thirty million dollars. Um the council continued that in twenty twenty one. Um this request would then continue this portion of money to be available to um to complete the the projects that were awarded to RFP in twenty um last year. Also, there's an eight percent increase to the finance general budget. Um largely general fund, twenty seven point two million dollars. And the um the most significant part of that is for the participatory pro uh budgeting program to continue in twenty twenty two. Um rounding it out, there is a seven point six million dollar or a four percent uh increase. That's general fund to the Department of Education earned early learning. Um five point four million of it is to um basically have funding available to honor the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year contracts. And those are the the largest uh on a percentage basis. Uh there are a few other noteworthy items on the next slide. That I that I pulled out. One uh is seven point eight million dollars, general fund increase to the Office of Housing. So this is for rental assistance contract with United Way. They will administer the program, um the the awards. Um however, the contract had not been completed at the end of twenty twenty one. So now that it has been, the money is which need to be available to to pay those amounts. And then finally, um there's a one point four million dollars general fund increase. Uh to the Human Services Department, and this is for the administration of the community safety capacity building. Um so they were appropriated monies that uh for capacity building that are anticipating to continue through twenty twenty two. However, this would also include um ensuring that the amounts exist in twenty twenty two budget to do the administrative side of that work. And I believe that is the um. The carry forward bill. Into at a very high level. And before I continue with the discussion of the exceptions, I'll pause to see if there are any questions.
Uh Vice Chair Herbl, please go ahead.
Just um to restate what I I think this presentation shows as it relates to the carry forward. The carry forward is um the there's no new proposed uses uses for those dollars. It's it's a carry forward for the original purpose as budgeted.
I share her, well, that is exactly correct. That that is actually one of the key factors that central staff looks at when we're screening. As to ensure that it's within that. Otherwise, it would be a uh. A midyear supplemental item or something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now I will, I'll move to the exceptions. Um so the total requested increase and the uh twenty one exceptions bill is thirteen point three million dollars. Um there's really two primary notable items that are in this bill. And and again, this is an exception um from a from a um nearly six, seven billion dollar um prior budget. Um but it is still indicative of monies that were spent and and higher than the budget appropriation that existed for the year. Um the the first one is in this uh Seattle Department of Human Resources. So this is in the healthcare fund. And there was a six, six point five million dollar overage um based on unanticipated claims activity at the end of the year. And so um those claims were all paid um because they were, they were deemed to be eligible and valid by the department. However, the authority budget authority didn't exist at the time to to fully make them. Um and and then next, uh within the Seattle Department of Transportation, there are uh about a total of. Six uh six point eight million dollars, five point one million dollars or five point two from the transportation fund. And one point six from the moved Seattle Levy Fund um due to an assortment of and unanticipated expenses. Including emergency response, pop, whole repair and operation support. Um again, similar to the um unanticipated claims activity, these were just items that were that were not expected. Um according to the department and therefore um we're in excess of the twenty one budget authority. Um and so similar, you know, kind of building off the uh chairs. I see, I see a question that I'm happy to. Dress.
Madam Chair. Uh please go ahead, Vice Chair.
So um the exceptions ordinance is, we're not providing new money. We're just providing the authority for money that they've already spent. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh so next, if we could look at the next slide. So this is some some ongoing work that uh we have been doing. Um at a staff level based on um as the chair mentioned, that the exceptions board ordinance is. Has become a sort of a regular practice as opposed to an exceptional piece of legislation. Um and and therefore, we've done a bit of additional research to that end. Um there one, one piece of that, and it's covered on the um in the memo on page. Let's see. Page seven is a detailed table showing the department characteristics of the past five years worth of exceptions ordinance. I didn't go further than that. I just took a kind of set a set a point in time and um and and went forward. Just to show um the size and nature of the exceptions bills that have been approved in the past years. Um and there's really, it's it's sort of sporadic in terms of departments that um are having exceptions to the budget authority. The uh as explained in the memo, of the the total size of the bill ranges from five million dollars in twenty seventeen. To a high point of thirty million dollars last year and to something that if there is a sort of a regular um trend in this table, about thirteen million dollars. And um in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, similar to the bill that is before you today. Um though the the key takeaway is that um it the the exceptions ordinance. Ha- has become and recently is a regular practice. Um and um as such, it it kind of um posed the question of, is this a regular practice at at our peers? And so uh what um what I did is um just again, just kind of picked the picked the universe to sample. And looked at the next four largest first class cities in Washington State. And that and contacted their finance officials to understand if if they similarly have this type of legislation as part of their budget adjustment practice. Um I did not get any responses that indicated that 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 is a regular practice at those other cities. Um I would point out that our um. City of Seattle is is significantly larger than um their next closest first class peers. Um so a- and and furthermore, our level of budget control is at the BCL level, which is a sort of program. Plus fund um level of constraint, whereas some other cities, notably Tacoma. Um control at the fund level, um so meaning it's it's easier, for lack of a better word, to to stay within budget. When the level of fiscal control is more broad. Um but that being said, the the management capacities between um Seattle and those other peers. Are are more, are most likely different, meaning there are more staff available to manage budgets. Um in city of Seattle departments than there are in other cities. But again, it's it's just a, just a bit of context um to just kind of show what the lay of the land is in peer cities in this state. Um so so by way of an issue identification, um kind of continuing along line of that. Of the thought of um how to address, if if there's a desire to address the exceptions ordinance as a regular practice at Seattle. Um one option, and this kind of builds on comments from the uh the CBO Director Dingley. At the May fourth presentation is regular transparent budget monitoring. So this is a kind of a way to um to show uh budget trend, but uh spending against budget trends. Um in a more consistent and public way to in kind of give early advance notice. That um that spending may exceed budget and that corrective action may be necessary. Um and so that that action could be taken in, uh for example, the year end supplemental bill um that council um receives. A kind of a a uh another option um is contingent appropriations. And so this is saying um. Identifying those places and those areas where it is more likely for there to be um a need to spend over budget. Though it's not a hundred percent certain and and you know, not comfortable to build into the budget itself. Um as at the department level, but provides some level of a contingent appropriation. So this is kind of similar to um the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections has contingent authority to spend. If fee revenue um is higher than what they anticipated, because it's assumed that the fee revenue is to then support work. That um that is in need of being completed in that year. So something along that line um could be an an option. Um I would note uh that that would reduce the level of fiscal control. Um so when you build um kind of flexibility in through a contingent appropriation, you you you. You have a little bit less budget constraint. Um and now along same similar line, um the city has a transfer policy in place that allows the budget director to. Transfer five hundred thousand dollars between BCLs within a department to kind of correct this. Um this sort of thing, and and in some cases, that is clearly already occurring um when 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 there are possibilities to do so. Um however, given the the ten dollar amounts we've been talking about so far today, five hundred thousand dollars is insufficient to cover this level of exception. So there could be some thought, and we haven't really had had detailed conversations of what that would look like. But something that would revise the transfer policy um um so that. The these budget exceptions could be handled at a more administrative level. By by CBO. But again, similar to uh the option B, that would be, the trade off would be reduced fiscal control. So kind of one of the reasons why there is exceptions is because there is a fiscal control in place that says this is the level of authority that you have. Um so if you know, any any sort of change that would kind of, I guess, release the pressure valve a bit. Is just logically reducing fiscal control. Um and then finally, no action, of course, is is an option.
And I and I would just add here, we are in discussions with the city budget office on some of these options. And for example, if we um sorry to throw all the scrolling, but if we go back, oh, it's in the memo, not in the presentation, pardon me. But um if we look at the table in the memo of the five year and look back, the Department of Transportation is a frequent. It has in each year had um budget exceptions and the Department of Human Resources, and I think in three of the five years. And so part of the discussion is um really looking at those departments in particular and making sure their appropriation authority for they, you know, annually is set. Uh appropriately, as well as looking at these other options. And then considering the trade offs of, as Tom pointed out, of maintaining um enough fiscal control and transparency. Where the council's oversight role and appropriation authority as uh on the one hand, as well as trying to avoid having to take up. This exceptions bill on a regular routine basis.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Uh thanks for the comprehensive memo. And if folks haven't had the chance to read it yet, I encourage you to do so. Uh there is no pressing uh question that the council or this committee is poised to ask or answer today. Uh regarding these issues that have been identified or potential options from central staff. So we wanted to tee those up early and to really flag that there is going to be ongoing policy conversations about how to um. Help create a a remedy so that the exceptions ordinance are truly exceptional. Um on page seven, for example, you'll see that in twenty twenty uh we saw the twenty twenty calendar year be exceptional. And that it was uh nearly, or it was over twice the amount of money uh as we hadn't seen compared to the other four years in that five year look back. And perhaps um that should be expected because twenty twenty was exceptional. It was the year that COVID first hit the city. Uh we were one of the first areas in the nation to be impacted by COVID. And so in many uh aspects, we did see um some of the departments really stepping up to try to provide additional services in new ways. And that required additional spending. Um so you know, recognizing that there may be times where uh we need to have something that does look like an exceptions ordinance is is, I think, good. Governing practice, but it's also, I think, good budgeting, just to make sure that we don't have exceptions ordinance on a routine basis. So thanks so much uh for teeing up this conversation, Tom, and for the work that you've done, especially in the comparison to Vancouver, Spokane, Everett and Tacoma. To see what their practices are. And also, I know you bring with us a wealth of experience from working in other jurisdictions as well and not seeing this practice used in those jurisdictions. Um has really helped to inform the conversations that we're having with CBO. So I want to thank uh the city budget office and Julie Dingly specifically for her interest in working with us. Um to figure out if there's a remediation strategy or a different path that we should be taking uh as it relates to exceptions ordinances. Um again, just team this up for an early and transparent discussion in the context of considering the exceptions ordinance and the carry forward ordinance. Uh so do colleagues have any questions about the two council bills that are in front of us? And uh need additional clarification of any sort as we consider this legislation today? Okay, I'm seeing, excuse me, no additional comments or questions. Uh Ali or Tom, do you have anything that you'd like to offer in in closing?
Um Madam Chair, just in closing, I would just talk about um the kind of the cadence for the rest of the year in terms of um. Known um known supplementals. And so there is um likely, if not already transmitted, soon to be transmitted, an additional standalone supplemental. Which would provide twenty twenty two annual wage increases and holiday appropriations up. Um for Juneteenth and Indigenous people, Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um so that bill, I I believe, is going to full council uh because it's essentially giving appropriation authority for prior council actions. Co- you know, coincident with all of those those prior authorizations. Um and then finally, uh there we anticipate um soon to receive a midyear supplemental. That'll include a co- a grant acceptance bill and then finally, a year end um supplemental um submitted with the budget process this fall. Uh which would also include grant acceptance. And that um concludes my comment.
Remind me, does the state legislature consider like um end of biennial supplemental? Don't they usually just do one supplemental between the biennium?
Uh that's um actually, that's my understanding. That's uh it's just determined by based on session. So there's the long session and the short session, and that the short session is the supplemental session.
Yeah. Yeah, still looking forward to moving us towards a true one time midyear supplemental. But really appreciate that we've been able to move away from especially the end of year supplemental. It was not ideal to conclude our our budgeting uh the last week of November, just to receive a supplemental uh request that first week of December. Everyone is exhausted at that point, and it's not great practice. So uh great, great work has been done in this arena, thanks in large part to the partnership. Uh with the new city budgets office uh director and their interest in working with us. But really uh in large parts of the heroic efforts of central staff. So thanks a lot. I thank you again uh to Tom Axel and Ali Pemucci. Um and uh with that, colleagues, we might be able to get out of here before noon. Um we have two bills in front of us. Again, the first bill relates to the um exceptions ordinance. Council Bill one two zero three one seven. I'm gonna tee that up for us. I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three one seven, the exceptions ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, colleagues. Uh it has been seconded. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none on the exceptions ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Herbold.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Chair Moskela?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the exceptions ordinance bill pass will be sent to the May twenty-four Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. And the second item in this last half of our agenda is the carry forward ordinance. I move the committee recommends passage of Council Bill one two zero three one six, the carry forward ordinance. Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Is there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please, oh, sorry, you were covered by my notes here, Vice Chair. Please go ahead, Madam Vice Chair.
I want to take this opportunity to thank all the folks who were involved in bringing to reality a commitment made in twenty seventeen for the Lambert House. There's six hundred thousand dollars in this piece of legislation to fulfill, fulfill that twenty seventeen commitment. And I know a lot of people former budget director Noble, the current budget director Dingly, and a lot of other folks worked really hard to make sure that we could close out that promise. So thank you.
Great. Thanks so much for lifting that up. Appreciate that. Hearing no additional comments or questions. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the carry forward ordinance, Council Bill one two zero three one six?
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Chair Moskela?
Aye.
Madam Chair, that is five in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and the committee recommendation that the bill pass will be sent to the May twenty-four Seattle City Council meeting for a final vote. That means we'll be moving forward both the carry forward ordinance and the exceptions ordinance and look forward to the ongoing work to do with you all and central staff and CBO on some of these bigger issues that have been raised in the central staff memo. Again, if you haven't had the chance to read that memo, please do, because it will tee up some of the future work for the committee on the macro level. All right, I think it's just before noon, and I've kept you an extra twenty-seven minutes. Look forward to seeing you at our next committee meeting. We'll have the next Finance and Housing Committee meeting on June first at nine thirty AM. We are still working on finalizing our agenda, but some of the items include two presentations on recent social justice initiatives from the City Budget Office and the Office of Housing. We will also have the Office of Housing appointment for your consideration. Again, that is interim director Michael Winklerchen, who joined us today. And we will also have the Washington State Department of Transportation Royal Broham, how do I say that? Go ahead. Okay.
Royal Brom.
Royal Brom lease, that is the two real estate leases from Finance and Administrative Services. The time is eleven fifty-eight AM. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Have a great rest of your afternoon. Thank you, and thanks for your patience as we got the meeting started today. Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.